Good evening. I'll now call the May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Bermuda Run Town Council Meeting to order. As a reminder for everyone, please silence your phones. Want to recognize the quorum, we have all five council members here. Welcome. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the intent of the Town Council to make solemn the proceedings of this meeting and the business brought before the governing board to offer the opportunity for a reflective moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Agenda Item Number Four, Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics Statement. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes one sixty-eight, eighty-six, and one sixty D dash one oh nine, and the Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics policy adopted November ninth, two thousand and ten, and further endorsed on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before the Town Council for a vote of this meeting tonight. If so, please speak up and let the council know at this time before the agenda is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Agenda Item Number Five, Adoption of the Agenda. Councils had an opportunity to review the agenda. Are there any revisions?
We approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ernst, second by Ms. Zeliga. Show of hands, those in favor. Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Agenda Item Number Six, Approval of the April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four Town Council Meeting Minutes. Councils had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any revisions? Motion to approve?
All second.
Motion by Mr. Tedder, second by Ms. Schaefer. Show of hands, those in favor. Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Agenda Item Number Seven, Citizens' Comments.
Mr. Mayor, no one signed up to speak tonight.
Agenda Item Number Eight, Proclamation, Older Americans Month. On behalf of myself and the Town Council, I want to read the proclamation in recognition of Older Americans Month. Whereas the Town of Bermuda Run and Davie County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently, and whereas the Town of Bermuda Run recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and support adults may need to make choices about how they age, and whereas the Town of Bermuda Run can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, the Town of Bermuda Run Council and I do hereby proclaim May two thousand and twenty-four to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Nine, Davie County Sheriff's Office Update. So at least once a year, we invite Sheriff Hartman to come speak to our Town Council. The goal is for him to share data and insights coming from the sheriff's office. One of the core principles of our town is safety and security. As I ask Sheriff Hartman to come forward, I will remind our audience that as a standard protocol, council is welcome to ask questions of Sheriff Hartman, but we will not take questions from the audience. Again, this is our standard protocol. If you do have questions, I encourage you to reach out separately to Sheriff Hartman or his office, or reach out to the town, and we'll relay that, those questions back to the sheriff's office. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sheriff Hartman.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me and having me to speak with you. So we're going to spend some time talking about the first quarter of twenty-four in particular in your town. But there are a couple of other things I wanted to present before we get there. So you have a, our year-end report from two thousand and twenty-three in front of you. The audience has it. The audience has a second piece of paper, but we will talk about that later. If you have any questions after the meeting or how we need in the future, just ended up some tidbits about the past year, the sheriff's office activities throughout the So in January, we did a first budget workshop for the county commissioners. That was for us to talk about where we thought our budget pressures were going to be. Thought that would be interesting to show you some of that, not the full thing, but just a couple of things. So our first major budget pressure is just like you at home, our costs have increased. So an example of that here is a case of ammunition has gone up eighteen percent in three years. That doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you fire over fifty thousand rounds of ammo a year in practice and qualification, it equates to quite a sum of money. Our body armor, same vest, has changed. In two thousand and eighteen, it cost us five hundred and eighty-nine dollars per officer to buy one. Last year, it cost us eight hundred and forty dollars. That was a forty-two point six percent increase for our officers. So in general terms, these are some increases in cost for us over a three-year period. Our vehicles, our patrol vehicles, over a three-year period went up twenty-six point seven percent. If any of you bought a new car in the last three years, you know exactly what I'm talking about. The consoles that go in most cars to hold our radio equipment and our light controls and stuff for a patrol car went up two hundred and seventy-eight percent. Medical costs for the inmates at the jail went up eight percent. That was in a one-year timeframe. The mattresses for inmates at the jail, have to provide them a mattress. So usually, we replace mattresses about twice a year, one every, about every six months, unless they carry one up. In one year, the cost for those mattresses went up ninety-six percent. Meals at the jail went up eight point seven percent over a one-year period. So, next, sir. That's, that's just like you at home, costs have risen for the sheriff's office to operate. This is our number-one pressure. This is a slide I used in January to present to the county commissioners. This is the starting salary for a deputy. So as you can see, it compares us to the counties around us. I also include Chatham County, Sheriff Robinson and I talked a lot. His county is a lot like Davie County. One side of it's growing really fast. It touches up against Durham and Raleigh and a city, but the other side of his county is just like me. It's very rural, farms, small communities, unincorporated towns. So we're extremely similar. And so I use him a lot to compare. But as you can see, we were behind. The only people starting less than us for a deputy was Jackton County. I will tell you that as of today, this slide is no longer valid. It is outdated. All of those counties are in their budget process, just like we are. They're all asking for raises. This is what we're competing with now. So this is a recruiting advertisement for Cabarrus County. As you can see on it, it became effective April month tenth. So Cabarrus County is hiring a young person straight out of high school, no college degree or anything. They go to open school, starting pay fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. And then you can see there, the incentives are offered. So the pressure that's applying to us is, is, I foresee in the future, creating that vacuum effect, as I call it, where it sucks everybody away from us. They don't come here to get a job, or they start here and as soon as they get a little bit of experience, because they can lateral over there, their experience gets on an even, even more of a bump, and we lose them. So I, I just wanted to present that, so you understand there, we're facing pressures from outside of our community that are going to be very impactful for the sheriff's office. So we'll talk about Bermuda Run in particular. As a hulk, I wanted everybody to have some understanding of what we're saying. So just a couple of things. If I say CAD activity or calls for service, that is any activity that's reported in our communications center that a deputy does. It could be a nine-one-one call, answer, a traffic stop, paper service, any activity that's recorded by them. When we're talking about actual criminal statistics or crime statistics, there are two ways those are recorded. UCR, which is the Uniform Crime Reporting, or some people call it the National Crime Reporting System. So that system started in January nineteen thirty in forty-three states. All of that is collected by a state and then turned into the FBI. And that's where you get your national crime statistics from. That system was designed with seven crimes as what they call index crimes. In nineteen seventy-nine, they added arson as an index crime, which gave eight crimes. But what we discovered over the past twenty years is crime has evolved and changed, and what we chose in the nineteen thirties no longer fits when we're trying to track what's going on. So a group of folks over the last few years invented NIBR, the National Incident-Based Reporting System. So all agencies were required by the federal government to go to it. It lists seventy-one specific crimes called Group A offenses that we track data on. There are ten additional crimes called Group B that we only attract arrest data on. North Carolina became certified to do this in two thousand and nineteen. We actually started NIBR's reporting in August of two thousand and twenty. So as we go through this data, data, you will see there's a mix of how that's reported still. UCR, some people still use UCR or still report it that way. Some systems do, some systems use NIBR. You'll see some of that. And if you're really interested in crime statistics, that's a website you can go to and are more about crime statistics than you ever wanted to know. Okay? So the first thing we're going to talk about is coverage of Bermuda Run. So this is a map. We have the ability to track. I think some of you have probably seen this type of map before. It actually shows our coverage of the city. As you can see, we stay fairly busy covering the city. So that also indicates to you there were three thousand, three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine visits from sixty-four different deputies during the first quarter of the year. So that could include answering calls, that includes Mike, that could include just a deputy getting off the interstate, going to Advan to answer a call, because he passes through the city. But as you can see, our busy area is your business district. It always is the busiest area. Another way to look at this is in the blue chart. So if a deputy answers a call, he requires a hundred body camera, okay? So I know how many videos they're recording with their body camera system by hour a day. So you can look at this for the first quarter and see what your busiest hour was. It actually gives you an indication. I can then compare it to what we consider the call volume or the CAD data, and if they're very different, then I know something's wrong. This should mirror that, and it does, but you can see when your busiest times are where we're actually recording video or calls, okay? Next, sir. So this is another way to look at it. I included this just so you could see Mr. Foster in the first quarter. A work year for Davie County is two thousand and eighty hours, standard work year. So you can break that down by quarter, four, roughly four hundred and some hours per quarter. You can see Mr. Foster spent four hundred and twelve hours inside the city limits of Bermuda Run. So your community officer is here for majority time. He's never going to be here the full time because he has to go to court, or if he arrests somebody and takes him to jail, he meets the city limits, like everybody else. He has to go to training or take a vacation day, so he's not here. But the other thing I wanted you to see is, he's not the only one covering your city. All of these officers covered your city. So the next person was Officer Nathan Andrews. He was in Bermuda Run for a hundred and sixty-four hours during the first quarter. So I can track who's here, how long they're spending here, and where they're at in your We came and practiced this yesterday. So this is a report. We're going to look at CAD activities in your city. This is a report by date, so I can see every CAD activity in the city by the date. It'll show me time, the day, the call for service or CAD number. If we did a report on that call, that's your OCA number, the address, what, the street address, and what the CAD activity was are listed in the CAD system as. We'll go all the way to the bottom for you, sir. So you can see in the first quarter, January through March, you had five hundred and forty-seven CAD activities that the sheriff's office responded to in Bermuda Run. So remember that number, and remember that's what the sheriff's office responded to, because you'll see a different number later, and we'll explain that. The next little number you see is fifty-one. That's the number of actual crime reports we took. So while we had five hundred and forty-seven CAD activities in the first quarter, we only took fifty-one actual full-blown reports. That's not a bad average. That's actually a pretty safe community value. Go ahead, sir, to the next one. So this is by unit, so I can look and see what officer's doing what in the city, responding to calls inside Bermuda Run. For example, Unit one eighty-two responded to all of those calls, but the unit underneath them responded to very few calls. So inside Bermuda Run, just same data, just a different way for me to look at it, track it. And all of this is what my command staff uses to correlate where we need to cover. And I'll show you something about that shortly. Next, sir. So this is actually by street, so I can drill down to actually see what's going on in every street in the town. If you'll scroll to page twenty-five, sir. Are you there already? Thank you. If you look right there, Highway eight oh one north, that's three twenty-nine, eight oh one north. Every one of those calls, that's the hospital. So if you look, a hundred and nineteen calls are CAD activities were at the hospital. Out of those five hundred and forty-seven. So if you subtract that from five hundred and forty-seven, it reduces your call volume and activity volume throughout the rest of your city tremendously. You're blessed to have a hospital in your city, but it also throws the numbers off a little bit if we don't look at that. Because we responded to that hospital very often, and it's for things that didn't start in the city, but because the hospitals are reported as being in the city. So this is just another way to look at that data. I can look at it by hour and day of week, and we can code it where it's hotspot, so I can see what your busiest hours are. As you can see at the top, that's your hours of the day. So if you scroll all the way to the bottom, this is for a whole quarter. You can see the busiest hours during that quarter are from ten in the morning to about four or five in the afternoon. That's when we're the busiest in your city during the first quarter of this year. I will tell you, that holds pretty true countywide. People think Friday and Saturday nights are our busiest times. They're not. It's usually a Tuesday, a Wednesday, or a Thursday, and it's always from ten to two countywide is our busiest time. So that's our one, sir. So this is just another way. It's a visual reference for you to see where all that CAD activity is actually taking place in your city. Again, you can see the heaviest points are in your business district and up through Kinderton. In the two fenced or gated communities, there's less activity going on. There is activity, don't get me wrong, but there's less. So I can track that. That helps me choose when to assign officers. Mr. Foster has a, a distinct duty as your community officer that's a little different. When he's not here, or even when he is here, patrol officers are also covering, that are there to answer calls, et cetera. So this helps me choose when to assign or add extra people, okay? So let's talk about actual crime during the first quarter. So this is, compares crime categories over a four-year period, year-to-date, or actually, it would have been the first quarter when I ran this. So you can look and see what's going on. The red is two thousand and twenty-four, so the first quarter of this year. As you can see, you've got a couple that spiked pretty high, that's fraud. I think if any of you have heard me talk before, I've told you for past several years, fraud is the fastest-growing crime we're encountering. There's so many ways now to cheat people with the internet and those kinds of things. It is a constant, constant battle. My white-collar folks that do what was called white-collar crimes carry the highest caseload by far in the agency.
Just a real quick.
Yes, sir.
So a question I remember asking you when we met a while back was a question around fraud, and the CAD reports will show fraud in an address. And the thought is, somebody has perpetrated fraud at the address as a physical driving, but it could be an online fraud that's being reported from that address.
That's correct. Very correct. So, but now, keep in mind, we've switched. We are not on CAD activity now. These are the actual crimes that we've taken reports on, okay? So while we're talking about it, and you look at it visually, it looks like a huge spike for the whole first quarter in Bermuda Run. You're only talking about ten reports, okay? So your next one is drug crimes. We're going to talk about that a little bit. It spikes very much in the first quarter. Here's the reason for that. My deputies noticed some activities in your business district. You have a couple of stores that are open late or open twenty-four hours. You have an interstate with an exit at your business district. So they had noticed some activities. We started looking at that and watching it. There definitely was some different activities going on, so we assigned some targeted enforcement during the first quarter, and I'll show you as we move forward. That's what that spike is in the drug violations. That targeted enforcement worked. It increased drug arrests, and some of that activity slowed down at those businesses and throughout your corridor, business corridor up there, okay? Next, sir. So this is the same data, you're just looking at it in a different view, and you can see the hotspot. Again, the hotspot is the drug violations. There were twenty of them. But if you look at that data at the bottom, your totals, these are total crimes reported, okay? So you're not reporting huge amounts of crime across a whole quarter. And a couple of things to note, two thousand and twenty-one is an outlier year. Everybody remembers what happened. It was COVID. That was really a weird year. Everybody, even the bad guys stayed home for a while, and the numbers dropped to almost nothing. It was like we were in the nineteen thirties again, as far as that goes. But on the two thousand and twenty-four number, if you look, it looks a little bit higher, but keep in mind what we talked about with the targeted enforcement, which pushed the drug violations out because we were targeting things. So if you take that twenty away, it puts you back down in the forties, which means to me, or the way we look at that, your crime rate's actually dropping overall, or the numbers of crimes being reported. Yes?
Sheriff, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, those are all first, first-quarter measurements, not annual, those first-quarter equitable.
That's just first quarter, okay? Everything we're talking about that I'm showing you tonight, I just took the first quarter because it's smaller and easier for us to talk about than a whole year's. Okay? Yes, sir. So this is just a visual reference. Shows you where those crimes happened. If you look where the little dot has a number on it, that means there were actually five crimes reported at that location. So if I'm looking at this system in a live version, I can, I can zoom in, and it tells me what all five of those were, et cetera. But at the top, I'm showing you this thing. So this is a, reported in the UCR format. So remember I told you there were seven crimes under UCR reported? Three of those are what's considered violent crimes. Four of those are what's considered property crime. Every other crime that occurs, doesn't matter what it is, if it's not one of those seven, it's not reported under those top two tiers. It's reported as an other crime. This is why they came up with NIBR, so you could delineate those other crimes and see what they were, okay? But as you can see, that compares, that's, that's compares March of twenty-four, it's one month, and in this system, I can look at the previous month and see the change, look at the same month a year ago, and then I can look at year-to-date. So March, the year-to-date, shows you the whole first quarter and shows you the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. So if you look, your property crimes are stayed about the same during the first quarter. Your violent crime dropped, your other crime increased, but keep in mind what we did with the drug thing. So your other crime increased forty-six point nine percent over two thousand and twenty-three. But I want everybody to focus on something else besides the percentage, because you'd think, wow, that's a huge increase. But if you look, we're only talking about forty-seven other crimes total. So that's not a huge number. Twenty of those are going to be drug crimes. So this breaks that down again. I'm just comparing same data, but this is per month. I'm just going to scroll through these because this is for you to peruse at your convenience because it breaks down each month instead of breaking it down by the quarter, okay? So you can look at it month by month. If you want to go through these, that's February and March, and let's go on to the next one. So this is what's called a statistical briefing. Actually, would you pull up the statistical briefing? Let's look at it that other way. There you go. Last one. So this is your statistical briefing, but it has an extra category in it, a subcategory. It makes this report really long, as you can see, but it breaks that down. So let's scroll down to the other, please, sir, or the CAD, either one. So those are other, right there. So those are other, right there. So you can look at that report when you choose to, and that subcategory shows you what those are broken down to. This is what those crimes actually are, and you can see what's not included in the UCR. But those are crimes under the NIBR system, okay? Scroll down a little bit further to CAD activity. So this statistical report gives you a total of everything that happened in your city. Remember, we told you there were 547 CAD activities for the first quarter. That's that we responded to. If you look at the statistical report under CAD activity, you have a total of 1,300 and some reports, or CAD activities. That's because this includes what fire departments responded to, or the ambulance responded to. It counts all CAD activity. So with this statistical report, you can actually determine everything that's gone on in the first quarter inside the city. And then if you look at your arrests, I believe if you look at those arrests for the home view arrests, I know y'all can't see it, it's small, but you'll see a majority of those arrests are 90-95 statutes. That is the statute that covers illegal drugs, all illegal drugs, which goes back to what we talked about with our targeted enforcement. It increased your drug arrests in the city for a certain time, but that activity has slowed. Now, I can't tell you it's gone forever, but if it comes back, we'll be back again, okay? Get back to the PowerPoint. So that's your same. I just took the subcategory out in the PowerPoint because that subcategory makes it too long for a PowerPoint. Next. So this is an offense report summary. So remember, I told you we only took 51 criminal reports? Let me finish and then I'll let you ask a question. We only took 51 criminal reports. There were 58 crimes, because one report can just more than one crime. So for the whole first quarter, there were only 58 crimes reported to us inside the city limits. And those are the crimes. Those are the actual general, most of them are the general statutes that were reported, okay? Under your description. Those are the categories that they were reported in. So 58 crimes over a three-month period for a city that has an interstate through it and a major intersection is not bad. You have a very safe city overall, barring what just happened two weeks ago, only 158. You have a very safe city, okay? Next.
Let me, real quick.
Yes.
So I don't know if you were here when I made the announcement, but we don't take questions from the audience during presentations. Or any questions that would come from the audience, I would encourage you to reach out separately to the sheriff's office, or send a message to the town, and we'll get that to the sheriff, but it kind of breaks our protocol, so I just want to make you aware of that. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
So this is my last slide. I don't want to take up too much of your time. This is just where you can find out information about the sheriff's office. We have an app. For those of you in the audience, if you look on one page of the year-end report, there's a barcode where you can download the app from your smartphone. We have Facebook page you can go to, our website. We have what we call the portal. That's the website for the portal, which has data, or you can send information or request information from us. If you're a more visual person and just want to see where crime is actually being reported across the county, you can go to the Crime Mapping website, and it'll show you the crime maps. Or if you're not a computer person and you just want to know what's going on, you can always get to Davie County Enterprise. They do bring every comment, every person we arrest.
Don't they?
They do. Every lead. You also have, that's your same, I have printed that for you and my audience, so you can take it home. You don't have to try to remember. Look the websites, that's later on if you want to. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to take questions from the board.
Real quickly, can you go back to the slide that had the map that showed the different travel patterns of the officers? Something caught my eye, and maybe it's just a miss on my part. I noticed in the upper right corner where it shows the NC Fusion and RISE, I don't see any pattern there, and I'm wondering if that's in your system showing outside the town.
It is.
Okay, okay.
It does not show in the city limits.
Okay, just happened to catch my eye, and I thought, because I know there's a fair amount of travel that occurs there, and it wasn't showing up in that number.
I can tell you, if I just run a general map, I have to be careful looking at RISE because we work so many hustles there, which is where RISE hires a deputy to work off-duty. That's what we call it, is a hustle.
Got it.
But even then, they turn their, activate their equipment, so it shows them there a preposterous amount of time in actuality.
Okay, so basically, you're skewing the data.
And actually, over the past two weeks, they've actually hired even more people based on that event. For the foreseeable future, I think they'll keep a few more deputies there, okay?
Thank you for explaining that.
Yes, sir.
I'll open up the council.
Sheriff, how many deputies do we have in Davie County? Just out of curiosity, I didn't see. I know you mentioned 64.
I have 92 sworn deputies.
Wow.
Full-time, and probably 26 or 7 now part-time. A lot of those part-time handle courthouse duties. Almost all my courthouse duties are handled by part-time. But now, full-time employees, there's 123 of us now.
Are you at capacity? You still have open positions?
I am full on the sheriff's side. Well, I have a couple of openings, but you know, when you have that many folks, you always have people in transition, one or two. Now, on the jail, the detention side, I am short. I have been. I don't think you'll find a sheriff in the state that's not had problems keeping detention full.
Yeah.
We've been very blessed so far. We've kept enforcement side full, but my fear goes back to what I presented earlier, with what our neighbors are doing, I don't know, I don't want to start losing people because it's hard to keep us full and recruit good people, and I don't want to start losing them, so.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Ernst?
Yeah, when RISE was mentioned a minute ago, I would assume, my assumption is, and I think I'm right, I might not be, you corrected me. With the exception of what happened a couple of weeks ago, for the most part, with RISE and Fusion, that's not significant crime areas at all, is it?
No, the biggest, once in a while, they have a fight or an argument between people.
Oh, surely not, with basketball players.
Back in college soccer. We do have a significant number of car break-ins. You know, when you have that many cars in and out, parking that large of a crowd, and it's a high-traffic area, takes two seconds to pop a window if a lady leaves her purse in view down in those lower fields. There ain't nobody around. So yeah, we have some car break-ins. But as far as violent crime, I'd say no. You know, the fights are usually simple fights, like say you got an argument over something. Can't think of any other violent incident we've had there. Can you describe it?
Now, the other question is, when you get on the interstate, where do we end in the county begins from the town? I know with the town, but I don't know where it lines itself.
So if you look at that map, it pretty much shows you, what on the interstate falls within your city limits. It's a very short section that falls within the city limits.
So the rest area, that's the county?
That's the county, yes.
Is there ever any issues there?
Yes, sir.
Because I see a lot of trucks parked there, which would indicate there may be things going on that you wouldn't like.
So anytime you have an interstate, that interstate brings its own issues, especially I-40. It's a major interstate. The volume of traffic from all over the country, that brings its own different issues and problems. And unfortunately, that splits our county with several exits that routinely, I would say in a quarter, we have quite a number of issues off of the interstate, from drug arrests to wounded people, to guns, to about anything you can imagine.
So in a couple of years, when the Baltimore Road Extension is built, it'll basically be between the Smith Creek line and in. So one can assume that that's going to create this sort of this natural funnel of some of that as well, just sort of logical. A lot of positives, but that'll come along with it.
I think right now, if you're talking about interstate, you're always going to have that. You have a major interchange with businesses and a hospital. That's going to bring the issues for you. Moxville has a major interchange with businesses, restaurants, et cetera. That brings problems for them. If they add that, like you're saying, at the end of Baltimore Road, but there's no business growth there, it doesn't create the same atmosphere as those funneled for business, okay? So our biggest problems, exits or interchanges, is yours and Moxville's 601.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Great work.
Thank you.
Appreciate all that you do.
Absolutely.
All right, so now back to the sausage making. Item number 10, proposed action item, approval of solid waste recycling services contract, Republic Services. Mr. Meadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is the contract for our solid waste recycling services for the town. Our current contract with Republic Services expires June 30th of this year. So if you recall, we've talked about this for several months now, that we were putting this out the bid to receive requests or quotes from other providers. Republic provided, we're the lowest responsible bidder for our services for our town. It's a 15% increase over our current cost, which, from a staff perspective, that's very pleasing to us. But other highlights of this contract, it's a five-year contract. Our previous contract was three years. So that was very enticing for Republic and for the town, to help keep those costs down. Other kind of highlights of the proposal is one that was not in the current contract, but it's this participation and sponsorship of community events. We're still kind of working out or negotiating this dollar amount for that, but in verbal agreement, they have agreed to sponsor in monetary terms. But I think the negotiation that we've had is that they will provide trash pickup services for our town events. As some of you may know, that has always been kind of the responsibility of those vendors or, you know, those groups that are putting on that. So to me, from a staff level, we really thought that that was a great benefit. They'll provide us with the carts. It won't be trying to figure out who to, it's going to take the trash off this generate. But probably the biggest highlight is this expanded service routes in Kinderton. That was one thing that we really worked hard on, working with the HOA there, but I think overall, this is a win-win. So we've got a rendition of a final draft on Friday, but staff is asking that you approve allowing myself and the town attorney to continue to execute this document, and by all means, we'll provide back you the final document once executed.
Yeah, for context, thank you. For context, this is probably among the top three expenses in terms of large spend in the town. So as you think about our overall budget, I call them the big rocks of what we have in terms of our expenses. So, and I'll also comment that while I won't call out the gentleman's name in the crowd, I know there's one gentleman here who's got an extraordinary smile on his face because he's worked very hard to lobby for access into some of the areas that, for a host of reasons, Republic was not able to accommodate. Thank you for your persistence, sir, and hopefully, we put paid to your hard work. I'll leave it there. With that, I'll open up the council for any questions for Mr. Meadwell. Or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ernst, second by Ms. Nelson. Show of hands. Unanimous? Thank you, council. Moving on to item 10B, approval of interlocal agreement with Davie County.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is a renewal of the interlocal agreement for services with Davie County. The town has had an ongoing relationship with the county to provide these shared services. These services being tax collections, service billing and collections, building inspections. The one thing that we have asked to remove is those planning and zoning services, which you'll see later on in the agenda for that. So we are working with the county on this. There are a few things that, as Sheriff Hartman said, they're working through their budget as well. So this is on their docket for approval, probably at their June meeting for this interlocal agreement. So staff is asking, again, to allow myself and the county attorney to proceed on with execution of this document with the county.
Thank you, Mr. Meadwell. Any questions?
Now, a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Teder, second by Ms. Zeliger. Show of hands. Unanimous? Thank you, council. Item number 10C, resolution of approval for sewer and stormwater engineering services, Hazen and Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if it pleases the council, items C, D, and E are very similar. These are all resolutions of approval for our on-call engineering services. As many of you know, our current engineer, John Gray, is slowly trying to retire. I will not let him. So he continues to answer the call, but I do know that John is stepping away. But, so instead of us going with a full-service type engineering firm that covers all these bases, it's really prudent to us to have flexibility in deciding on who that engineer will be. So what you have before you are three resolutions for approval of engineers Hazen and Sawyer, which will cover certain aspects for the town, you know, stormwater and/or water sewer type work. The next is Weatherill Engineering, who will provide engineering services for transportation and stormwater. And then you have LJB, which we're asking them to look at for our stormwater. So all three separate resolutions that I would ask council to vote on, but that's really the gist of it, is this approval process to be able to select these three engineers for certain tasks to provide work for the town.
And just to add to that, this also allows the town, you, the ability, if there's an issue or something needs to be addressed, you're not going through the full bidding process and time delays to get those bids back, et cetera. This is essentially, you're laying out a contract agreement with these three different agencies to allow you the flexibility to literally be able to reach out.
Yep.
Have them come do the work on our behalf kind of thing versus having to go through that very extended bidding process that in some cases painfully so, right? And at the end of the day, probably using the same vendors anyway.
That's correct.
So just for clarity.
And Mr. Meadwell, these are all engineering contractors that the town has relationships with.
That is correct.
That have already done work for us before, and we have trust already built there and the experience already there.
Excellent point. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Meadwell before we go through the threefer? Okay, starting with the resolution for Hazen and Sawyer, do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Hazen and Sawyer.
Shaper, Ernst, approval? Show of hands. Thank you. Unanimous? Resolution for Weatherill. Resolution for Weatherill Engineering.
I make two.
I'll second that.
Nelson, Zeliger. Show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you. And LJB.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Tetter, second by Shaffer. Show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay. Moving on to item 10F, pardon me, approval of planning administration services contract benchmark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned earlier, our current services with the county, this interlocal services with the county expires on June 30th, 2004. We really, staff feels that it's probably best to kind of move those services away from the county, kind of bring them back more in-house. Benchmark has a long, long relationship with the town of Bermuda Run. You know, they've worked in this capacity in previous years. They've just completed our comprehensive plan. They are the organization that we typically turn to for very specific planning-related items. So, it was only natural that we reached out back to Jason and Benchmark again. We really probably wanted to do this last year. However, Benchmark was just, they just didn't have the capacity to fulfill this need. So, you have their scope of work. I'm still kind of working with them on the hours. I'm really thinking that we probably need just a few more hours included of that. So, we're still working with that negotiation. But what I'm asking for, for council, is just to allow myself and the county attorney to complete this and finish out the negotiation with Benchmark.
In addition, thank you, Andrew. In addition to the town utilizing Benchmark in several different ways, certainly in our comprehensive plan and our land use and zoning work that we're doing now, Benchmark is also very widely deployed across North Carolina and beyond. So, not only do we leverage them for multiple different services, but they come to the table with a breadth of knowledge that other, around other municipalities, that information that we just simply wouldn't have in our town, they can bring to the table that knowledge. So, extending this kind of function just seems very logical in the scope of activities that they provide to the town, and frankly, provide to many, many municipalities across the county, or, excuse me, the state. So, thank you for that. Any questions for Mr. Medwell? Or a motion?
I'll move that we allow Mr. Medwell and Mr. Williams the opportunity to negotiate the contract with Benchmark.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Shaffer, second by Ms. Zeliger. Show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel.
And thank you for that extra work, Mr. Medwell.
Indeed. Okay. Moving on to item number 11, comprehensive plan progress status. Pardon me. So, just over a year ago, April, in fact, of 2023, we completed the comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan, a year prior to that, involved reaching out to our community and beyond in receiving survey feedback on the foundation to that comprehensive plan. The feedback of the 485 people that provided that feedback to us drove the objectives and strategies that are documented in our comprehensive plan. We didn't create those objectives and strategies as something to put on the wall and take pictures of. It was actually something that said, this is an action plan for our council and for our staff, and how we need to move forward in executing those tasks. So, what you see here, and it'll be in the agenda deck, so you can read it in more detail, and I won't go through all the painful process of reading each one of these, but what you see here is eight objectives spanning multiple strategies under each of those objectives. And to the far right, you see where we are in terms of progress made in this past year. So, quick math, we have 40 total strategies and objectives, and of those 40, 35, we've demonstrated some action on in the past year. So, let me first say, thank you to staff and thank you to council. These things don't move on their own, and these activities demonstrate the town's commitment, the council's commitment in moving these items forward. That is not to say we are anywhere near complete on many or most of these, but it demonstrates the action from the council in hearing what we heard from that feedback and in the comprehensive plan, turning that into action. So, it is my commitment, and I believe it's the council's commitment, what we will do this time next year, we will provide yet another update. And each and every year, continue to show progress with the goal of these things, ultimately all them either being completed or all them demonstrating significant progress towards completion. I believe, whether you're in business or whether you're in government, part of our role here is to read that feedback, take that action, and then report back results to those of you that put us in this role. So, again, I want to thank council. I will not go through the painful details of reading all 40 of these, but I do encourage you to take a look at them. Happy to field questions later as you go through this. But I do think it demonstrates a commitment from the council and this town in moving forward on the comprehensive plan. Any comments around that before I, we move to the next topic?
Only thing I might add on the responsibilities, we might add some kind of legend for what the acronyms mean.
They're actually, we can do that. They're actually in the comprehensive plan, and it's really a host of businesses and/or timeframes. But that's a good point. We could certainly add that to the back of it. But it is, just in case you don't have that, go to the comprehensive plan, at the very end of those strategies and objectives, it spells out all the participants and all those different acronyms. But thank you for putting that out. All right. Let's move on to item 12, town manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your agenda package or your monthly financials, we'll kind of let the council know that staff is feverishly working on budget. Sheriff has indicated as much. It's a very time-consuming time of year for us. So, I talked to the mayor a little bit before the meeting tonight, and I was like, you know, fretting a little bit on this. But our intent is to have this budget presentation to you at your agenda meeting. We'll probably be wrapped up with the budget sometime this week. So, we'll go ahead and do as we previously did last year. We'll bring each of you in and sit and go through each line item on the budget and explain and answer questions. I think that process worked very well from last year. I think that each of you existing or former council members, hopefully, you appreciate that, you new council members, I hope you see the value in that as well. But the intent is for us to actually have our public hearing in June, June 11th, for that budget. But we will continually to work with you, even after the budget is presented, there's always possibilities for change. So, even up to the night of the budget approval. So, but hopefully, we'll have everything buttoned down, ready for you on May 28th for that presentation. Second thing is that this week, we had our bid, received bids or lack of bids for both our flag project and our street paving RFQ. We only, we did not receive any bids for our flag project and only one bidder for our street paving. So, both of those will go out for a rebid, and I'll let council know when those go back out. So, little time-consuming process to do that, especially with the paving project. You know, that just really puts us further behind in the paving season. But I'm really disappointed in no bidders for the flag project. I know that has been talked about for a very long time, but I think that we're working on some other items, action items with that, to see if we can get some other people interested in possibly bidding. So, outside that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Yeah, and I will just say, I know that in the time that some of us have sat on the council, one of our challenges on the street paving front, and I think a lot of municipalities deal with this, is we're just not large enough to command the kind of bid that you would have for larger municipalities, where larger service provider entities can come in with a lot of equipment and spend copious amount of time and energy paving lots and lots of roads. We have a very limited size of town, limited number of miles, albeit 21 miles, that's probably pales in comparison to Winston-Salem or others. So, it's part of our challenge in being that smaller municipality and trying to draw that interest in. I know we even talked about trying to partner up with other municipalities. That kind of seemed like it just never gained any momentum either, because then you get into this sort of, who gets to go first, and does that even pay dividends? If you're going to try to compete with someone else and you're spanning multiple municipalities over many miles, how is that efficient from a, from a, a street paving standpoint? So, just, just recognize, and I think we recognize, this is one of the challenges of being, one of the challenges. Many, many wonderful things, but one of the challenges of being in a, in a small municipality is you just, you're a very small fish in some of these cases, and we just have to work extra hard. And I appreciate all your work in having to go those extra mile to do that. That's, that's not, if you want to just get the bids decided and move on, you just don't have that flexibility. So, thank you for that. Any questions for Mr. Medwell?
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Mayor comments. So, May was full of events, and we're only halfway through the month. So, we had Food Truck Friday. We had an NCAA women's golf event over at the country club, and I heard the comments before the council meeting. Let me just say, I concur with all the feedback that says, none of us can come anywhere near the distance those ladies can hit golf balls. That was incredibly amazing, what talented group of women, and being able to see them play out there. That was, that was awesome, absolutely awesome, and humbling at the same time. And then, we also had this past Saturday, our first car show. I think most of the folks in the dais and others here had the opportunity to come over and witness some incredible, incredible vehicles, some loud, some louder, but awesome, awesome event. A lot of good feedback in terms of the opportunity, they filled this entire parking area all over this town center, and it was quite incredible. And so, I know they're already interested in coming back next year. So, again, first half of the, of the month, we already have several things happening. Pardon me. Upcoming events, I see Chief Howard back there, so we got to give a shout out. This Saturday, from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, Smith Grove Fire Department's 50th, 5-0, 50th anniversary. Rain or shine, please plan to come out. Thank, thank our firefighters, thank Don and his team. Many of us, many of us in this town see those calls coming through and seeing the service provided. And this is an opportunity to go out on Saturday and shake a hand and to, and thank them for the service these past 50 years. And I'll say it again, thank you. Also on Saturday, at 4:30 on Saturday afternoon, Davie County Senior Services has a fundraiser over at Sam's Ice Cream. Sam's Ice Cream is located right next to Food Lion, next to the Davie Tavern. 20% of the proceeds from that, those sales from 4:30 until 8:30, I believe, it goes to senior services. Between 4:30 and 6:30, you get to see this ugly mug over there serving as well. So, come by and buy, buy some ice cream and to, and give to a great cause for Davie County Senior Services. Also, Saturday, May 25th, the town's first town concert, TAMS, T-A-M-S, will be in concert at 7 o'clock, hoping for great weather, looking forward to some great music, and getting to see folks in and around Bermuda Run. So, looking forward to that. And lastly, in next month's June town council meeting, we have Duke Energy teed up to come and give a presentation. I know there have been a lot of comments over the past couple of years about quality of services and outages and what's happening with our service provider, excuse me, from electricity standpoint. We reached out, Andrew and I met with them a few months ago. We laid out all the concerns being expressed by the community, and we brought them back, and they will be presenting lots of information on the technology changes, outage reports, et cetera. So, I encourage folks, come back and listen. Whether you're in the town or beyond the town, you're still being serviced in this area by Duke Energy, so I encourage you to come and listen. And with that, I'll turn it over to town council for any closing comments.
I'd like to say that, looking at the action matrix for the comprehensive plan and having the opportunity to serve on the planning board through the first comprehensive plan, it is absolutely a credit to the staff, to the community, and to the previous councils for moving those action items along. We started with a lot of blank blocks, no checkmarks, and over the years, we have really seen those items move along. So, as a new person sitting here, thank you all for making sure that comprehensive plan has moved forward to the third evolution.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Salute. Second. Got it.
With the speed of light.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Tetter, first, motion by Mr. Ernst, second, Mr. Tetter. Show of hands. Unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Say, that was interesting, right? I joined up.
The sheriff.
But I don't plane with you right there. They want to be on a plane. I guarantee I'll read that on a plane with you.